September ninth twenty twenty four meeting, the fifteenth of the year. Alyssa, can you please read the publication?
In compliance with chapter two thirty one of public law nineteen seventy five, notice of this meeting to be held at the criminal justice building sixty one Main Street South River has been published in the Louners Tribune on January fifth, twenty twenty four, postponing municipal building bulletin board, the borough website, and the front doors criminal justice building at sixty one Main Street South River.
Go ahead.
Mayor Gindy?
Here.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Here.
Councilman Seola?
Here.
Councilman DeSantis?
Here.
Councilman Zinnian?
Here.
Councilman Gertensky?
Yeah.
Council President Krenzel?
Here.
Please hand over the flag.
To the flag, in the United States of America, and as we represent the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please stay standing for a moment of silence. Ladies and gentlemen. We have nothing for pro�ations, agenda session, and we do have three meetings, first meeting. Angela, would you like to please try them?
Sure, ordinance for first reading is twenty twenty four forty, that's just a handicap parking spot on Lilah Avenue, twenty twenty four forty one.
The chief will go.
Yeah, that's recommendations from the chief regarding no left turns and a reduction in speed limit on specified streets. And twenty twenty four forty two, that's just the ordinance adopting amendments to your redevelopment plan for what we know as the PNC property.
And then for second reading, we're just going to go over it before we start reading it. One was for the stop signs, which is going to be the four-way stop signs, which was on Virginia Street. Second one was Lower Main Street, the redevelopment for the Port Plaza. We're going to go on to second reading. Alyssa, twenty twenty four thirty seven.
Ordinance twenty twenty four thirty seven, ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River so as to amend chapter one ninety three entitled Vehicles and Traffic.
Make a motion with full reading.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Seola, second by Councilwoman Ballas.
All in favor?
Aye.
Would you like to open it up to the public? Ten minutes. First call? No, no, no.
About Virginia, I can talk about.
Yes, you can.
How you doing? My name is Ronald Luca, live on the corner of Virginia and Dowell Street. How you doing? Eighty-five Dowell Street, okay? I just, it, it, for me, it's not good just to come up here and complain about something. I need to come up here and also tell you all the good that y'all do. Since, you know, I mean, I sat and eat that fig tree many days and watched. If I count a hundred cars, ninety-five of them has stopped and has stopped somewhere. Maybe four of them has slowed down and then continue on and one goes straight through. Also, I have not seen a speeder, eh, I mean, one speeder, since that sign was put in. For me, it's thank you. But the people that I live around, I know they feel the same way. So again, please, keep up the good work. Thank you. That's all I got. Thank you.
Anyone else for further? First call, so like people can sit. Second call?
Make a motion to the public?
Motion by Councilman Seola. Second by Councilwoman Ballas.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any council discussion? Do I have a motion? Motion by Councilwoman Ballas, second by Councilman Zinnian.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yeah.
Councilman Seola?
Yes.
Councilman DeSantis?
Yes.
Councilman Zinnian?
Yes.
Councilman Gertensky?
Yes.
Council President Krenzel?
Yes.
Alyssa, twenty twenty four thirty eight.
Ordinance twenty twenty four thirty eight, ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, authorizing the sale of block one fifty, lot two point zero one.
Make a motion with full reading.
Second. Motion by Councilman Seola, second by Councilman Gertensky.
All in favor?
Aye.
Would you like to open it up to the public? First call? Second call?
Motion to close vote.
Motion by Councilman Seola.
Second.
Second by Councilman Gertensky.
All in favor?
Aye.
Council discussion? Final motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Ballas, second by Councilman Zinnian.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Seola?
Yes.
Councilman DeSantis?
Yes.
Councilman Zinnian?
Yes.
Councilman Gertensky?
Yes.
Council President Krenzel?
Yes.
We're going to move on to first reading.
Hold on, we, we have one job on us. Yep, thirty-nine.
Twenty twenty four dash thirty-nine.
Ordinance twenty twenty four thirty-nine, ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, adopting the amendments to sub area one fifty of the Lower Main Street redevelopment plan.
Motion with full reading.
Second. Motion by Councilman Seola, second by Councilman Zinnian.
All in favor?
Aye.
Would you like to open it up to the public? First call? Second call?
Motion to close vote.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Seola, second by Councilman Gertensky.
All in favor?
Aye.
Council discussion? Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Ballas.
Second.
Second by Councilman DeSantis.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Seola?
Yes.
Councilman DeSantis?
Yes.
Councilman Zinnian?
Yes.
Councilman Gertensky?
Yes.
Council President Krenzel?
Yes.
Now, first reading. Alyssa, twenty twenty four dash forty.
Ordinance twenty twenty four forty, an ordinance to amend the code of the Borough of South River, chapter one ninety-three entitled Vehicles and Traffic by amending section one ninety-three dash thirty-one point one, schedule two A, handicap parking fair.
Mayor, I move that the council pass ordinance twenty twenty four dash forty on its first reading by title only and the clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law with a second reading and public hearing to be held on September the twenty-third, seven P M, by video conference via Zoom or in the council chambers of criminal justice building sixty one Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
Motion by Councilman Seola, second by Councilwoman Ballas.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Seola?
Yes.
Councilman DeSantis?
Yes.
Councilman Zinnian?
Yes.
Councilman Gertensky?
Yes.
Council President Krenzel?
Yes.
Alyssa, twenty twenty four forty one.
Ordinance twenty twenty four forty one, ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River so as to amend chapter one ninety-three entitled Vehicles and Traffic.
Mayor, I move that the council pass ordinance twenty twenty four dash forty one on its first reading by title only and the clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law with a second reading and public hearing to be held at seven P M on September the twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, by video conference via Zoom or in the council chambers of criminal justice building sixty one Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Seola, second by Councilwoman Ballas, uh, Councilwoman Ballas?
Councilman Seola?
Yes.
Councilman DeSantis?
Yes.
Councilman Zinnian?
Yes.
Councilman Gertensky?
Yes.
Council President Krenzel?
Yes.
Alyssa, twenty twenty four forty-two.
Ordinance twenty twenty four forty-two, an ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, adopting the amendments to sub area one fifty-one of the Lower Main Street redevelopment plan.
Mayor, I move that the council pass ordinance twenty twenty four dash forty-two on its first reading by title only and the clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law with a second reading and public hearing to be held at seven P M on September the twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, by video conference via Zoom or in the criminal justice building of the, of, excuse me, sixty one Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
Second. Motion by Councilman Seola, second by Councilman Zinnian.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Seola?
Yes.
Councilman DeSantis?
Yes.
Councilman Zinnian?
Yes.
Councilman Gertensky?
Yes.
Council President Krenzel?
Yes.
We're going to move on to reports. Bruce?
Thank you. The twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four road program began, you're starting work on Lundy. The twenty twenty-three local projects grant, we authorized us to proceed with that and we're beginning the project design. Local aid, the two thousand five local aid application that was submitted, we're just waiting for, all the towns are waiting for the DOT to make their announcements. The substation work is continuing, we have processed the progress panel. And that's pretty much it.
Council, anything for, for engineer? Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of resolutions on the agenda, number two seventy-three, the borough's renewing the prescription coverage from seven one twenty-four to six thirty twenty-five. It's a nine point seven five percent increase. It's significant, but it's less than what the state and some other hips are offering. Number two seventy-four, the borough's amending the lease for a second phase of battery project down the school substation. This resolution amends the original location, extends it so we can do the second phase. Two seventy-five, we have a resolution for chapter one fifty-nine for a green acres grant for five hundred and fifty-four thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. This is for Grotkowski Park All-Inclusive Playground. Total project was seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand. Green Acres Grant is seventy-five percent, five fifty-four, two fifty. You also approved the seventy-nine thousand dollar grant a couple of months ago, so the borough's share will be a hundred and five thousand out of seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand. Two seventy-six, we have, we're applying for a hundred thousand dollar grant down Volunteers' Park from the State of New Jersey Department of Human Services for a fitness area walking trail. And two seventy-seven is a fifty thousand dollar application to, to T-Mobile for a grant for the same project. So if we get both grants, that'll cover that whole project.
Thank you. Councilman, anything for Seola? Adrian? Adrian.
I have nothing to report, man. All good.
Thank you. Fire chief, Wolf?
Uh, nothing. Just, yeah, we, all of our engines got pump tested last week, everything passed, no problems, everything's good with that. Right now, they're doing maintenance, three of the, three out of the five are done, the other two will be done during the week. And then we just will move on to our other maintenance for the vehicles, but right now we're status quo.
Right, chief? Status quo? Keep in mind, we're going to structure far one sixty, one sixty-two Main Street, please keep those families in mind. And thank you to all of you. Mutual companies that came to help us. Yeah, it was very, very remarkable job. Council, anything for the chiefs? Please, chief?
Loving, man.
Andrea?
I have nothing tonight, man.
Alyssa?
Nothing tonight.
Mark?
Mayor, just a couple of infrastructure things. The road program has started, they're on Leonardine Avenue, they're doing all the handicap curbs first, and after that, they will notice the public again when they're getting ready to bill and pay. The water treatment plant, the chemical change has been completed and tested, it is now online, and the meter program is moving along. We just urge the public, if you get notices, please pull and get your meter paid. Go ahead.
The only question I have for you is the electric bill. A lot of people have been calling me in regards of the delay in the electric.
Yeah, we're still investigating, they supposedly were sent out to the post office.
About a week and a half ago. Right, about a week and a half ago, they was, a week and a half ago, and they seemed to have disappeared online. If you pay online, your number is correct. The company is looking to have to redo the bills, they're going to bring them up here to South River, and we're going to send them over to the post office ourselves. We heard some rumors that there was a problem at the postal authority building up in.
Carney.
Carney, about a sewage flood, the damaged thing that we haven't been able to. Hundred percent into that. So, just be patient, we are adjusting the dates that the bills are due by, and there won't be a penalty period, and we're not shutting anybody up for a year until we get the bill things straightened out. The same way with the water bills, and we have to juggle now, half the bills are coming in electronically and half the bills are still with the meter readers. So they're joining them together to get the water, they have to do two separate things to get them together. So, moving forward, we're sorry for the delays, never happened before. Go ahead, first call.
Issues on the next time. Anything for Art?
I have one thing more. So, with people that have the new meter, that's going to be automatically read.
Right.
I assume they're still going to get the blue card because the person delivering that's not going to know.
They shouldn't be getting a, once the meter's installed, they shouldn't be getting a card.
So, when I was at the, at forty Washington on Friday, and a resident called that they were trying to read it, and they had the card and they had the new meter, actually went there myself, I knew, I knew a woman a long time. So I guess the question is, if they get the blue card but have the automatic meter reader, should they still fill it out or they can disregard?
No, I, I think they could disregard, they're online. Well, there's a possibility some of the, which meters are done, and the meter reader is in that section, if there's, he, he just doing automatically what he's done all these years, he can't get any, leaves a card.
It could be a lag, it's not real time, they could have got installed the day before.
A lot of these meters, the reader now is inside the house, so he can't tell from the outside. Before that, there was a reader on the outside of the house. So, that could be the problem, that they, you know, half of the section is done, and the other half haven't scheduled their appointments, that's why we're trying to get everybody to schedule their appointments.
Thank you.
Yeah, the, the last thing I forgot to say, Mayor, is, you know, the building department worked very hard, and we were able to give a temporary C O to the early learning center, they got in on time, and the temporary C O with some outside stuff that happened and completed, everything in the building was completed too, like you told us, everything went well.
Thank you. Now, we're over to the council, Councilman DeSantis.
Okay, so I'm the liaison for the planning board, for those of you that may have made out now, so we had our meeting on August twentieth, which was held virtually via Zoom. We had a presentation there by Resilient New Jersey, Raritan River and Bay Communities. There are programs focused on the seven Middlesex County municipalities that are impacted by the Raritan flooding, which include Old Bridge, Woodbridge, Carteret, Perth Amboy, Sereville, South Amboy, and of course, South River. They're part of the NJDEP, and they help provide guidance and strategies on how to improve the quality of life of the Blue Acres parcels. For, you don't know what Blue Acres is, Blue Acres is also part of the NJDEP, and they purchase properties in flood prone areas to help relocate those residents. After the purchase, there's a lot of restrictions on how the land can be reused, with focus on green space, parks, community gardens, et cetera. South River, of course, has several clusters of Blue Acres properties. The presentation that we saw was geared around the waterfront revitalization district, which for those of you that don't know, it's off Whitehead, between Causeway Street and Herman Street. So if you're coming down Whitehead, it's on the right there, all that area. The process is several stages, we are in the very beginning stages right now, we were showing some concepts, this is to create dialogue and get feedback from the planning board, which has already started. I'm personally looking forward to that area getting up and going, and I think the planning board is on the right track to get these discussions and dialogue going. As we progress, I'll keep everyone updated as best I can. And our next planning board meeting will be next Tuesday, September seventeenth at seven P M, right here in Criminal Justice Center, sixty-one Main Street, second level. And the public is encouraged to attend these meetings and be a part of, of what we're doing.
Thank you. Councilman Gertensky?
Thank you, Mayor. First off, on the Office on Aging. Let's see. They will be closed on September tenth, on a half a day, and on September twenty-fifth for an off-site event. There is also a high dose seasonal flu coming up, you must pre-register for, you know, appointments are required, so you can call the Office on Aging on this, and set up an appointment, and signup has already began. I encourage everybody who belongs to the Office on Aging too, to go to the website and see how the signup procedure works, because a lot of times too, you may be too late and miss an event that you might be interested in. Also, there are a few other things. The Neighborhood Watch is starting up again, they're going to have a meeting Thursday, September twenty-sixth at six P M, right here at sixty-one Main Street. Also, the police department has got a food drive going on, that will be on September twenty-first, between eight and twelve here. Donations come from Thomas Street, or you can make them at the food bank, and they also have a child safety belt seat check installation too, if you want to stop by here. This is also going to be on Thomas Street, and this is on September twenty-first, between eight and twelve P M. And they'll check, you know, your child safety seats and if they're good, or if they're not good, or if you need to update them, or whatever. You have to access it, chief, I believe, from Thomas Street, the parking lot, I think that's where they're.
Yes, that's, that's where our, our representatives will be.
Okay. And that's all I have right now, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilman Zinnian?
Board of Ed, the new preschool was completed for the new school year, the gym at the high school was redone and will be used for all sports and also for classes, the weight room was also redone. The new addition to the high school is completed, has two extra classrooms, along with a dance studio where students will be able to put their old music on and learn how to dance. And that's all I have here.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ballas?
I used to wear that in gym. Just from the South River Food Bank, they have a program called now, it's called Start the Morning Off Right, it's the twenty twenty-four breakfast and snack food drive, which is going from now until September thirtieth. The most needed items are hot cereal, cold cereal, pancake mix, pancake syrup, granola, or snack bars, fruit cups, shelf, stable milk, and non-perishable orange or apple juice. The places to drop donations off are Corpus Christi Church on one hundred James, Holy Trinity Church on ninety-eight Leonardine Avenue, Saint Peter and Paul Church on nine Jeffrey Avenue, Saint Mary's Church on thirty Jackson, the South River Public Library at fifty-five Washington, fifty-five Appleby Avenue, the Borough Hall on forty-eight Washington, Trygus Locksmith on forty-four Berry Street, and of course, the food bank at ninety-eight Jackson Street. If there's any questions, you can call two three eight, uh, seven three two two three eight three zero two zero. Okay, the library, the library is sponsoring, sponsoring something which I, I think will be very cool and helpful, they're doing a Halloween costume swap. So if you drop off a gently used costume, I'm sure people have them from when their kids maybe wore it once, or whatever, they will give you a token. The library hours to drop off are Monday, September twenty-third, and during the library hours, and Wednesday, September twenty-fifth. So for each costume you donate, you will get a token, so say if you donate three to, three costumes, you get three tokens, you can, you can exchange that for a new to you costume, so if you see somebody's costume, they donated, and you would like that for your child, they will swap it out. So I think this is a great idea. That will be done, the swap will be done Thursday, September twenty-sixth, between five and eight. So I will go through what I have, I'm sure in my house, I'm asking my friends, I have little kids that aren't using them anymore, anybody else up here, welcome with kids, drop it off, you get a token, and I think that's a great idea, your kids, you know, costumes are expensive, and I think this will be a big help. The library is again open on Saturdays between eleven A M and four, and I suggest you go to their website, I checked it out today, they have so many events coming up, they have a chess club session, they have an arts and crafts, but they go on different times, but they, they really, really do a wonderful job up there, so check out their website, dot lary library dot com. That's it.
Councilman Seola?
Thank you. E D C is going to resume the meetings coming up in September eighteenth, they did postpone for the summer. All are welcome, coming up with ideas on different things on Main Street for flags and banners and things like that, so any ideas, you're more than welcome to come and let us know and try and go from there. And that's all I have right now.
Thank you. Council President Krenzel?
Planning to have the utilities meeting on September twenty-seventh. You know, it's not easy keeping up to date with laws and regulations, the powers that be are planning to increase the electric costs for the grid, as we get more information on that, we'll let you know about that. And here's a fun wall coming down the tracks, I should say the highway, this is from the New Jersey Motor Truck Association, New Jersey has adopted California's Advanced Clean Truck Act Regulation, that's what it stands, E C T Regulation. The objective of the regulation is to require all new trucks sold to be electric, and it's phasing to begin January first, twenty twenty-five. The cost of a new electric truck is three times that of a new diesel truck, and there is neither enough charging locations nor power to supply if they were all put into action. Just to let you know, in accordance, you know, electric trucks can't do as much work as a diesel truck, so therefore, it's going to take more trucks to get out there, and therefore, guess what, prices are going to go up on everything, so just to let you know some of the things that we're keeping an eye on and trying to stop, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you, I will hold my comments, I'd like to open up the public to their comments, ten minutes, state of mind. What do I have to come up with?
Good evening, everybody, my name is Regina Sweeney, I own Loving Hands Cat Rescue on Wygant Avenue. I know there is a huge feral problem in this town, I cannot address it on my own. We are a small rescue, we do just that, we rescue, we have taken in seven in the last week, in very bad condition, found in various places, we take surrenders, these cost me money. We are a nonprofit, we are a no-kill, we are run by volunteers, and we are run on donations. I cannot, I don't know how to take on the problem that you guys have here. I don't have the volunteers, I don't have the manpower, I don't have the money. I know everybody wants T N R to be done, but it's very hard when people that want their cats T N R have been feeding them for three years. Once you feed a cat, in my opinion, and I think a lot of people's opinion, you own that cat, but then they start calling us when their cat just had kittens, and now they want us to take the kittens. I'm only approved, I know you were, you were the mayor sort of at the time, I'm approved for seven to nine cats, or kittens, that's what I have in there now. And if they're, if the T N R, if it's not provided by the borough, when people call us and I can't help them, they think we won't help. So education, I think, is absolutely key here. People need to know that they need to be fixed, these cats, we can help them, we can help them with traps, I will help them with monetary things, but I can't drive all day, every day down to P F A to get these cats, they delivered out of, out of low cost, I can't do it. I mean, it's just, we're just trying to help here, we help the community, I know, you know, we do things, we work with the community, we work with the businesses in town, we hold our events in the community, we do the, we did the, the food giveaway, we did the children's supplies, I need help doing this, I can't do this on my own, and I'm, I'm really asking for something from somebody here, monetarily help educational something to get people on board with what we do and why we do it. Now, I've had a call, I think it was on the South River chapter, some man wanted me to come and take ferals off his property, and some of them had collars on and some of them are ear tips, if they're ear tips, they are T N R, that is pretty much everybody knows, mostly who know that, so they'll cut a piece of their ear off. So they know that they're not, they're not in any danger to anybody, they're can, they're not going to make babies or anything like that. So he had said to me, he wanted me to come, and I said, sir, I'm not, I can't do that, I, I, I just can't do it, I can't go onto property and take other people's cats, or cats that are feral, what am I doing with feral cats? So he harassed me to the point that I had to go to the police station and file a complaint, and I don't think that's fair to me when I'm just trying to help. You know, I can't, I, we're run by volunteers, we're twenty women, I don't know what to do, and I'm, I'm looking for guidance from you guys and help from you guys to control this population, because a couple of years from now, you're going to have more cats here than you have people. And, you know, there's, you know, it's very sobering to think about, but, but, one cat, they can have kittens that are four months old, one cat in her lifetime can have a hundred and eighty-eight children, not including the children her kittens have, so you're talking about thousands, and they can be corrected for eighty bucks. So you're talking about thousands, and they can be corrected for 80 bucks. But I can't do all that.
Right, it's too much.
It's too much. I don't have grants, I don't have, I work on donations. I'm out all day, every day, you know, hitting the pavement, asking people for money. So I'm looking to you guys to help me. I'm in your community, and I want to stay in your community, but I need help.
Well, I know that I had a conversation with you not too long ago, and one of our biggest issues is, well, two folds. One, money, which is not easy to come by. Right now, the Board of Health has about $1,000 or so as earmarked towards the TNR. But the other bigger problem is volunteers. I know that they have been trying to do fundraising, it's not easy to get volunteers. I'll tell you right now, if volunteerism was out there, it would be easier for us to raise the money for, and for us.
If we could just raise awareness, I think you might get volunteers, honestly. If there was some kind of pamphlets, or something that we can do collectively to get people to understand that with their help, we can make a difference here. But I don't know how to do that, I can't do that as one person. You know, I took this on to do something, you know, now that I'm retired, and it's become, it consumes me, and I still don't feel like I'm helping.
Okay. I'm leading up to the Board of Health. We have sent an invite to you to come to one of our meetings. Would you want to come to one of our meetings? Just to, I mean, I know Bonnie's on there with me, just to maybe get some ideas, because again, even the Board of Health, they have to have volunteers to do fundraisers sometimes if they don't have people sometimes. We don't have enough fosters either. We have fosters that have six cats, I mean, and they're keeping them, for now, until they get adopted. So the same problem is.
Every one of my volunteers, if you volunteer at a cat rescue, you have a cat. I have six, everybody has probably average of three, so I can't take any more on.
I know.
You know, I'd like to come to these meetings, but I don't, I don't even live locally.
Oh, is there someone that lives in town that would want to attend the Board of Health? I can give them a call, and they can give me a call, and let me know.
I'm sure I can get someone, but volunteers are hard to find.
You know, if you go to the Board of Health meeting, I don't know if there's something we can bat around or we can discuss with each other, not that we have the money to give to Loving Hands, because we have a small budget, but maybe together, a public announcement or something could be put together by a pamphlet.
You never know who does something, or who is connected to someone.
Exactly.
That can help.
Exactly.
You know, you just don't know. And I will tell you, just my own point over here. We were recognized by the governor as volunteerism of the year this year, so we want to, so we do really want to be here and really want to try and help, but we need everybody's help to do it.
But again, someone's more than welcome to come. We have a meeting next week, and we can't, we do it once a month, the third, Thursday, Thursday of every month, down at 48 Washington Street at 6:00. Just let me know. It's open to the public, so anyone's more than welcome to come.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Ma'am, if you would give me a press release, we'll put it right on our front of our webpage, and you can even, if you're, my email address is right there.
Okay, thank you very much.
Anyone else from the public? Want to bring up the mic?
No, no.
Joe Donato on 30 Daly Street in South River, just two houses down from Virginia Street. Beautiful job, that works out. I noticed it, and sometimes we just drive, every day, you just keep driving, and you don't see anything. And that happened to me, got followed by a police officer one day. But that is very noticeable, we did, and I noticed it's been quiet in the neighborhood as well, so that works out.
Police Department's doing a good job going around the whole town, yelling out curbs and sidewalks.
Yeah, I think, well, it's something new that people will probably notice, because it's something new.
Right.
Like that third light on your car, when they first lit on, everybody noticed. Now it's just part of the atmosphere, you know, the town ambiance. I did try to go through a planning board meeting, via Zoom, my computer, my cooperative, and in fact, it's at home right now, trying to figure itself out, because I just walked away from it. On county matters, the Main Street project, oh, how can I put this nicely? The state has a backup in approvals, so it's going to be probably another month or two to assure us that they're going to put a, expedite it, whatever that means. So hopefully, we'll get something out of that, but it's one of the.
I see that they put out a bill again, I'm trying to find it. I see that they put out a bill.
Like, we have to get approval from the state, the state funding, and they can come back and say to us, "Well, it's nice, but," and then we're going to have to make changes, so that'll delay the order a little bit longer. Hopefully, it'll be simple. We should be so lucky, but just so that you know, it is, we're on, it's a matter of knowing when it's actually going to get done. Then we have, I understand they crosswalk weekends, will be.
I sent you a purchase order, 10-week delivery.
10-week delivery, do you have any idea when that might take place?
We're into about five weeks since I sent you a purchase order. Soon as they come in, only takes a day to install.
Yeah, I've been busy, so I've lost track of time a little bit here, so, you know.
Supply chain issues, you know.
Yeah, well, it's a problem. Oh, thank you, whoever fixed the elevator, thank you. But unfortunately, the elevator works, but it's not working.
Mine has never worked for us.
Oh, this is for a second, I'm saying, but it might have to be. See that?
That was a replay from this week.
Yeah. Yeah, the sooner that gets done, if you just send me a little note, because I'm asked about it from time to time, and I'd like to be on top of it. I also want to thank Art for posting those two studies that were done on the water main problems we've had in town, and the third study that was done by Blavstein Institute, part of the University of, about the community as a whole. It's amazing what can ask for stuff that all of a sudden is found. Apparently, those documents, the two studies, which the Borough Engineer did, which I think was really, really well done, I think a lot of information in there, so if you could use that. My other question for us is, do we have a plan to do the water? You know, that question.
Here's your answer. The answer is yes. We're working out the tweaks, we'll probably be presenting it sometime in October. It's going to be one big surprise for the town. That's all I have to say.
If I can give any help.
I'm probably going to be talking.
Yeah, I fall off, but I do have a.
Long way to go left, I have to say.
Long way. Okay, okay, that's good. That eliminates a lot of things you don't need to talk about. Now, I didn't make of all the meetings, I've been indisposed, in physical treatment after my surgery, so I've been out of it for a while. But the, preventing the sale of park or fight to the people, so, no. What is, I know you have two gentlemen in here, and I just, I wasn't at the meeting, I did, I watched the video, they explained a lot of stuff. I think the problem we have with the last election is the people didn't understand, they didn't have an opportunity to ask questions about it.
Right.
Because if we can do something like that, you might get a lot of positive feedback, where you're getting that answer. I'm just concerned that people said no, you know, just like everything else, "Oh, yeah." You know, we can permit it to be sold in the state, sure, that's fine, but not in my town. That's not a new.
A lot of people, we had a lot of people that said yes, a lot of people said no. And I said after my last council meeting, what were you saying yes to? Or what were you saying no?
Yeah, the question, the question for the state was yes.
But were you educated enough to say the word yes? Or were you educated enough to say the word no?
Yeah, well, they have, people have to realize, when you say yes, you're talking about your town as well, as long as it's in the right spot and it's handled properly, and the chief has no problem with it, because the police are going to get involved at some point in time, and they won't, I don't want to overtax the police, as they have it now, so if he's okay with it, I don't see anything. I, whether we sell it in town or not, I really, it doesn't, I have no opinion, I mean, it's what I'll do, it's fine. People use it, I don't, but you know, the people use it, and some people need it medically, but there's a lot of things, they're for medicinal purposes only.
It helps in multiple ways, mainly it helps in the tax revenue. That's exactly what I'm hoping for.
Well, that's another thing that would be good, if we could, if you could direct, if we figured, from what gentleman spoke about here, they can give you an approximate idea of what the town would be, we'd be realizing, and if that money can be put into, let's say, you know, this is going to be the water system. That is, I think, is a positive idea that people would, I think, would, well, not everybody, but most people would probably say, "Yes, okay, you can see that," but then, of course, you have to do it. Can't say you're going to do it, say you, I mean.
You don't have to tell them.
Yeah, you've got to talk to them, you know? Yeah, so it's, it's got to be done and demonstrated that, yes, that is what's happening, and people have more confidence in it, than you say you're going to do something that's actually what it's done. The other item I was thinking about, and they're planning with the comp combining of the planning board and the zoning board. Okay, again, I wasn't able to be here. Is there, it could have been a problem? Because the reason why I'm concerned is, the report that was done by RU, one of the things it said is try to get many town people, residents, involved in the community itself, so, you know, committees, planning board, zoning board adjustment. Now, if you combine those boards, you might be losing some of those spots, or are we having problems with getting to the certain ones?
Not so much the idea of having problems, it's getting volunteers to contribute to these boards. It's more of me looking at it as a stream line. I want to try to make it easier for that homeowner, or that contractor, developer, to come to one board, present his project, and get it done.
So what you're saying is that even though it'll be one, combined one board, there's still be separate entities to it?
So, so basically.
But if we go into one meeting?
With the one meeting, I'd be taking members from the zoning, and members from the planning board, and bringing them together.
Okay, so we're not going to be.
I'm not going to.
I just, I've been doing reviews for the county, for many, many, many years, and I know what happens with developers, not so much individual homeowners, because we don't feel that, because we see that most of the times, like, we have no interest in it, you know, that's strictly municipal jurisdiction. But as far as the developers go, they always try, not, I shouldn't say always try, there's nothing that try to get away with stuff, and that's a concern, like, I go through it every day, I'm doing it now for 20-some odd years, 40-some odd years professionally. So that's a concern, you know, not that we don't want developers to, to give them a fair shake, you've got to give them a fair shake. As a property owner, you should be able to develop the property to its fullest extent, short of violating a neighbor, or the municipality's.
Surrounding area.
So that has to be enforced, I mean, there's no question about it. I mean, that was for, for me, and I think you guys, at your office, your guy knows that when I ask for a land survey, I'm asking for a land survey, especially for development, and we get all kinds of stuff that passes for a land survey, and it becomes a problem, a big problem that costs taxpayers a lot of money, so I don't see that happening in my own community.
I agree.
Again, you've got my number.
I know. I like working with you.
Well, you know what, you've got to work together. And that's, that's.
This is, we all live in the same town, it's our town.
Well, as I said many times before, they're family.
Yes.
And they may not speak the same language, but they're family nonetheless. Another suggestion is for the water, I almost forgot, I'm going to knock this thing over if I keep on doing it. Have public meetings and invite the public to come in with their problems, make out a questionnaire for them to fill out, so they can bring them in and bring samples of their waters if they really have any problems. Because I've seen a lot of stuff on the website, and as soon as I get on Facebook Advantage, I don't know what the heck happened, I get all these emails now, and none of them about the problems we have in South River, because as Mr. Kreuzel said many a times, don't complain online, come to council meetings, bring everything here.
I agree with that.
And that's what I, I would encourage anybody to do, these reports that Art put on the missile website, it's good information that the people should take a look and read, easy to find, believe it or not. You just go into the search engine, but Water Main, or something of that nature, and you'll get a whole list of a lot of things that we're not on before, even though those two studies are old, 1978, 1998, they still could be very useful.
All right, you can get your own. Thank you very much.
I agree with you.
Anyone else from the public? First call? Second call?
Motion, closed call.
Motion by Councilman Seale.
Second.
Second by Council President Kreuzel.
All in favor?
Aye.
Was it consent resolutions 2024 to 272 to 290?
Whereas Resolution 202401 authorized the Borough Council to utilize a consent agenda to adopt various resolutions of a routine and non-controversial nature at one time. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved that the below-listed resolutions are hereby adopted by the Borough Council in whole, as if the same were individually acted upon. Consent Resolutions 2024, 272 to 2024, 290, 272, authorizing the requisition of funds for payment to the facility of school monies. 273, authorize renewal of prescription plan coverage with Fender Card Services. 274, authorizing the execution of various agreements with AEP Onsite Partners LLC. 275, insertion of any special item of revenue in the budget. 276, approving submission of a grant application for an age-friendly project grant. 277, approving submission of a grant application to the T-Mobile Hometown Grant Program Q3 2024. 278, authorizing the execution of an indemnification and old carless agreement for Block 249, Lot 34. 279, authorizing a block party for Heritage Landing on September 14th, 2024. 280, approval of a special events permit to the VFW for an event that was held on August 17, 2024. 281, authorizing the Borough Clerk to waive the special event permit fee for the VFW. 282, appointing zoning board of adjustment member. 283, authorize certain utility refunds. 284, property tax refund. 285, accept August 5, 2024, regular and executive session minutes. 286, authorize the bills and claims list. 287, authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement with 55 Main Street SR Urban Renewal LLC. 288, authorizing the purchase of a fire hydrant. 289, approving submission of a grant application to the MWC Mental Health Initiative. 290, authorizing the execution of a software product agreement with Real Incorporated.
Motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Valles.
Second.
Second by Councilman DeZenian.
Councilwoman Valles? Councilman Seale?
Yes, extension of 286, 24 dash 02537, 00176, 01602, 02023, and 02833.
Councilman DeSantis?
Yes.
Councilman DeZenian?
Yes.
Councilman Gertenski?
Yes.
Council President Kreuzel?
Yes.
We're going to go with the body, Councilman Seale.
The only thing I really have is, Wednesday, 9/11, we're going to have a memorial service at Daly's Pond, at the memorial, and it starts at 6:30. All are invited to come down, pay the respects, and as always said, never forget. Thank you.
Councilwoman Valles?
That's what I was going to say, I hope to see as many residents come down and give us, we've lost one of our own here, and Chris was a great guy, and all this family, the Dickoff family, are still hurting, it's never going to go away, so, 6:30, Daly's Pond.
Councilman DeZenian?
There are free concerts on the first Sunday of every month, at 2:00 at the Imperial Music Center, hosted by the Imperial Music Center Band. Some of our own South River High School graduates are the ones playing, and they have a great selection of songs. They had one yesterday, the next one will be on October 6th at 2:00. Again, there is no charge, they have a snack bar to purchase chips and beverages, they usually have some sort of fundraiser auction. Come out and listen to great music. usually have some sort of fundraiser auction. Come out and listen to great music and help support them. That's on the first Sunday of every month, at two o'clock at Imperial Music Center. And this year, the Frost and the Pumpkin race is on. A new course is being designed. The length will be changed from a ten K, which is six point two miles, to a five K, which is three point one miles, and the date is set for Sunday, October twenty-seventh. And that's all I have. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Kreschinski?
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I'd like to thank all of our public service workers, our police department, fire department, our D P W, and Robert Lou Johnson. And like Councilman Seola had stated, you know, this Wednesday, we're gonna have an event at six thirty, and it's really, never forget. And the same thing too, would go also, a lot of people put it out of their minds and don't really understand, but December seventh is another day that, is another day that we should never forget. With that, I thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman DeSantis?
So, Councilman DeZemian, thanks for letting me know that the Frost on the Pumpkin is half as long, I'm probably gonna think about it this year. The only other thing I wanted to bring up is the South River Pop Warner Football and Cheer season began this past weekend. We were all played away games, but this coming Sunday, we will be home at nine AM, so you got about, well over a hundred of our up-and-coming, you know, student athletes that are representing the town, wearing that maroon and gray, and I'm a part of it as a coach, but it's a good thing to get up there and see everybody, it's a good time. So that's, this Sunday, nine AM is the first.
Council President?
I've always tried to get people to come together whenever the town has an event, like Memorial Day Parade, remembering nine eleven is another such event. It is a short event. It's six thirty, sunset's at seven fifteen, we have to be over by then. It's an event that all can come out, as the family of South River, and all you have to do to participate is to show up. So please come, it's a moving event, and it's something, again, that the community can all come together. You'll be reminded of this, cram the cruiser, it's for a good cause, on September twenty-first, eight to twelve, enter on Thomas Street, and our next meeting will be September the twenty-third.
Thank you. Okay. Long awaited. First of all, I want to thank Brothers Builders, Mr. Santos. Earlier today, we passed a second ordinance, which has been long overdue, and that is your redevelopment project, that is going to be the pathway to South River. The old Laugh and Shover Way is going to look like this.
Yes.
This is the side, that's the back. A whole entire corner, thanks to the rest of this administration, the planning board, the zoning board, you're gonna have a new, improved building. Has seventeen units, a specialty supermarket, cafe, a wine room. They even utilized the Blue Acres with a park, so I can thank you Brothers Builders for doing what you did. And this is just the beginning. In our second reading, oh, sorry, in our first reading, we are, we're moving on the PNC Bank, that's good, we're moving on the PNC Bank, which is gonna be your second redevelopment project, which is gonna be presented at your next council meeting. This is just the beginning to what South River is about to look like. It's long overdue. This is your town, this administration is working hard to make it happen for you. Also, earlier today, in one of our consent resolutions, which was two ninety, we spoke about something called a B real. A B real, right now, is a business card, it looks something like this. All over the council actually has it. What I'm doing is I'm making it easier for the residents to approach any of us and to swipe the QR code. This will actually open up all of South River's opportunities to you, when it comes down to permits, what's going on with your town, when it comes down to board meetings, if you have to pay a parking ticket, everything's on this business card. This is just the beginning. So, do you see that QR code from the cell? I'm sure the residents will mind scanning it. You see one of us walking around, you like to ask for the card, we'll scan your card. We're moving South River forward. I also like to thank the fire department and all the mutual aid for the last fire that happened on Main Street. That is right, four people, sorry, four families got displaced. There's a lot of talk over social media. Unfortunately, I find social media a complete utter joke and entertainment. I'll explain to you why I say that to you. What you don't know is, when a fire call comes in for a structural fire, or for a house fire, the people that are displaced, there's a process, and the town does contribute. The way they contribute is OEM, along with the marshals, we call Red Cross, they come out, and we alter the night while this fire is going on, and I was there at two o'clock in the morning, and they're lending out their hands to these people. These people actually got help. Doesn't stop the community from helping any families that gets displaced with clothes, toys, food, money, whatever you wish to do, is what you wish to do. It's a great gesture for us to all lend a hand. So that is the God-armed truth. There is no racism when it comes down to talking to any families that have gotten displaced. Everybody's considered equal in this town. So my only word to you is this, if you believe in racism, this is not the town for you. We all work together. Period. That's all I have to say to you. Streets. Police department continues to line our streets the proper way. They put up four-way stop signs. A lot of people do complain about the yelling on the curbs, or on the turns. The reason they're doing it is for your safety and your safety only. I know a lot of people complain about, "Hey, I've lived here for a long time, and you yell it out my corner." Well, they're looking at something else that you don't see today. Virginia Street, I thank the residents from Virginia Street, I know that this has been a long wait. And like I said, this is just the beginning. We're gonna be paving Leonard D and M. A lot of people saying it's a raceway. You're right, it's a raceway. First step is paving it, second step is putting up four-way stop signs. We are looking at speed humps, which is coming down the path. And last and final, September eleventh, it's a day that we don't ever forget. We lost one of our own, Christopher Dinkoff, a longtime South River resident. A lot of people lost their lives that night, that day, including firefighters, police, all public safety. Just remember where you were that day when this happened. Other than that, we are going to be going to closed session. There will be no actions taken. You're more than welcome to stay, you're more than welcome to leave, it's all up to you. Thank you. Alyssa, executive session, twenty twenty-four to twenty-one, uh, twenty ninety-one.
Twenty twenty-four, two ninety-one, whereas section eight of chapter two thirty-one, Public Law nineteen seventy-five, permits the exclusion of the general public from a meeting of the governing body under certain circumstances, and whereas the mayor and council of the borough of South River are of the opinion such circumstances presently exist, now therefore it is hereby resolved, for the mayor and council of the borough of South River, and the county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey, for the public be excluded upon the here and after a specific subject matter, and that such subject matter to be so discussed as follows, property acquisition, be it further resolved on such record of the above discussion to be made public when confidentiality is no longer required, the Borough Council of the borough of South River may or may not take formal action after the conclusion of the executive session.
Motion to go into closed?
Motion by Councilman Kreschinski, second by Councilwoman Valles.
Councilwoman Valles, Councilman Seola?
Yes.
Councilman DeSantis?
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian?
Yes.
Councilman Gerchinsky?
Yes.
Council President Krenzel?
Yes.
Motion to open?
Motion by...
There, where my white shirt is.